So call the Milton Common Council meeting to order Wednesday, June 14th, 2017 at 6:05 PM. Can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
I'll call the Milton Town Board to order confirmation of meeting notices.
Notices were posted at Milton Town Hall, First Community Bank, and Lake House Inn.
Can I get someone from the city council to motion to approve the agenda?
So moved second.
Got that, Inga? There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Dave is on. All those opposed? We have an agenda.
For the town board on our agenda here that was posted, what's your wishes?
A move to approve tonight's agenda for the town board.
Motion by Marion, seconded by Leonard to approve the agenda as drafted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Are there any public comments that anybody wants to make aside from the agendized items? Anybody can come up and speak at any time, I guess, but if anybody wants to speak now Okay, item number four, discussion and possible action regarding fire commission bylaws and intergovernmental agreement. This is something that the fire commission had already looked at, and both the city and the town have copies of it. And do you have any questions regarding it?
I'll make a comment, if you don't mind. Both the towns lawyers and our lawyer took a look at this, and we even hired an outside service through RW Consulting to look at this. And changes have been made, and we've had gone through this extensively over the last six months. So just put that out there for the people that aren't on fire commission.
I have a question. Just a probably procedural question, but as I read through the agreement from an outside perspective coming into this, I didn't have any problems with the agreement per se, but I do have the question about where's the teeth to the agreement. And what I mean by that is, there's not much in there that talks about what if one entity or the other is not able to meet its obligation. And that could go on both sides of the fence. There could be a time when, two years from now, or three years from now, or next year, where the city is not able to maybe meet its obligation because of other things happening, unforeseen things with budget, whatever, and vice versa. And I'm concerned about that because I don't want to see our city or the town in that situation. And that's just a comment, so.
And did you look at number 15 dissolution and withdrawal, and you didn't think that that covered it, or? I mean, the attorneys thought it did, so I'm just wondering if we're missing something.
The attorney feels that it's covering it. I just felt it was pretty general statements, not real specific. I just don't want it to turn into a legal or a community battle if that would happen. That's all I'm thinking. So I don't know how you address that, but I'm just offering it from an outside stepping away speaking as a taxpayer, not a public person. That's my thoughts.
You know, it talks about that either entity would have to have a resolution, it would have a certified copy, it would have to be delivered to the other municipality by June 30th. So I think it provides for like a six-month notice then. I can't imagine us secretly trying to divorce each other. It'd be pretty public.
I would not have to divorce at all.
Right, I know.
I may have a big resolution in case there's a divorce. I'd rather not be solved once we start this.
Right. Yeah, it does talk quite a bit about it in B2.
I just hope it wasn't fully covered, but that's my impression.
I think that a lot of your concerns would also be addressed with 16, 17, 18, and 19, where we are just, we're making the legal agreement to be a body together as one for the fire commission. I don't know if Jeff has any comments on that, or?
Not really. I think it's covered in there. I guess we're still farther ahead than what we had before, and we've got legal agreement, and it's been functioning for quite a while the way it was before, which didn't have any language, any clear language for agreements.
I'd like to address that, too. I understand, I think, where you're coming from in making each other behave in the relationship. The fact, I mean ultimately, it points to an arbitrator that would make any, resolve any of that. Of course, we wouldn't offer a hope that it came to that ever, but that's kind of how it's addressed here, is if we really can't resolve things and behave as we have historically in the partnership, the true partnership aspect of it, and live up to responsibilities, it would lead to, an arbitrator's been agreed to, to make it as fair as possible.
I just want to remind everybody, and Jeff, you too, if you're going to talk, be sure to use the microphone because Dave can't hear us otherwise. But I also have a question. With Janesville and Milton sharing a station.
Is that related to this agreement? Because this agreement is just between the city and the town. That's all we're talking about.
I'll save it.
Okay.
I do have a question regarding the agreement. Under 5A, the commissioners, and it refers to three members of each the town and the city stating that three members shall be residents of the city, and three of the town noted that they cannot be current members of the department, but wondering that can they be current participants of the town board or the city council? It doesn't state that. Or are they specifically just, not just, but residents?
I can answer that. That is something that we talked about when we went over it with the attorney, the outside attorney that the fire commission hired, and they can be elected, or they can be appointed from the community. Is that everybody else?
Have you discussed that in terms of group, what your plan is, or it just depends?
I think that that's up to each municipality. So if the city of Milton wanted to have some elected and have somebody appointed from the community, they could do that. They could have all of them appointed from the community, and that's up to the town, too, whether they would want, how they want to do it, too.
Okay, just curious.
That is one distinct difference in this proposed revision of the intergovernmental agreement, which by the way, there has been an intergovernmental agreement in the past identifying this fire department as a joint-owned department. But that is unique, that in the past, there was clear language that it would have to be three members of the city council and three members of the town board. And alternates that might be chosen would be of the council or board as well, from municipalities as elected officials. So that is unique and new. We did have some conversation with the attorneys about that. It's not something that historically we discussed a whole lot about and were ever concerned about, but it got put into this draft, and I, my understanding is that it got put in this draft that way during the discussions with the attorneys and Janesville, wanting to understand our intergovernmental agreement. So there's a lot of discussions drafting this new intergovernmental agreement.
Now, there was, at the last fire commission meeting, we had the attorney, Mr. De La Mora, say he was going to provide us with a revised copy of the changes that he had suggested that we were going to make as a fire commission. Do we have that current, latest issue copy, Jeremy?
I believe you should have been emailed.
Yes, yep, you do.
Okay, I'll look.
Right, it was emailed out. Emailed it out to everybody on city council, and Jeremy emailed it out to everybody on the fire commission.
I have a question on number four, the ratification and ownership paragraph. We discussed this, I think, last time about the assets and that we needed to create Exhibit B. When is that going to be done? I mean, that's not done yet, I assume, correct?
Correct. And that is one of the things that we talked about, whether the, who would do that. That's not something that, I don't think that's addressed in the transition team report.
No, it wasn't.
But that's, you know, that's something that we absolutely have to do.
Right.
So we'll have to figure out who's going to do that.
And when you're going to do it. Because I mean, if you're going to give approval, you know, that should be there also when we approve it, as far as I'm concerned.
But it's also going to be changing, you know, our, what, all of that stuff, that's going to be changing anytime that any new equipment comes in.
Yes, but you have to have a starting.
That's right.
So the attorney, what the attorney said, because that's going to be, it's going to be a time-consuming project, and we do have to get this implemented, that that can be something that would be later submitted when it's completed and approved. So it's not something, if I remember correctly, the attorney said that that was not something that we had to do in order to approve this. It's just something that he recommended that we do, so we all have an agreement on the assets and everything.
But at some point, we as bodies, intergovernmental bodies, would have to approve that.
Correct.
I mean, that would have to come before us, because otherwise, the court shouldn't approve it.
Right.
Well, if you...
Right, that's the, I think that was the intention of the fire commission, was that that was going to be done.
And we did receive a list initially from Chief Lucas at the beginning of all of our, all of our teamwork here, of all of the equipment that we have, and what it was used for, so, and even the prices in the year that it was all purchased. So in essence, although it's not written in this here, we do have this. And then I'm sure that even since you gave us this, there's probably more that...
Has changed.
Yeah. But the fire department does keep track of their inventory, correct? I mean, it's not like we're creating the wheel, and nobody has any idea what equipment's there. Yeah. Okay.
There has been some discussion on this inventory, and the list you're referring to on the equipment is a significant amount of that inventory. Real estate is another part of it, and there's probably some, will always be some miscellaneous other items. I don't think there's any question about, or anybody would challenge what is jointly owned, other than I mentioned, that you should probably clarify the old Public Works building and its property, because I was concerned about the city's interest in that. And that was addressed in one of our recent discussions, too, that that, we've created a document already for the use of that, so we're aware of that. It's documented already. So that was the answer to me, and I'm satisfied with that. But that should be actually be addressed when Exhibit B is created. And I would suggest that any potential action on this intergovernmental agreement would address a timeline for Exhibit B.
Also, number nine, dealing with the budget, there isn't a date in there. Is one going to be put in there, or how is that going to be addressed?
I was actually thinking, Marion, that that is something that we all should determine tonight, because just as much as...
That's what I'm saying.
Right. But with all of the changes that we're looking at for the month of October, I know that's usually when we actually do our budgets, and that's when the fire department does it. But I don't know if the transition team is going to be doing that, or if you had planned on Chief Banker doing that. Yeah, and so, and so maybe, maybe we need to move it like to the month of September, so that it gives everybody the opportunity.
So you want that by September 30th, every single year, everybody, that the fire commission would have a budget to pass on to the different municipalities? Is that what you're thinking?
Uh huh. I think that that gives each of the municipalities time to incorporate that into your budget and our budget.
You mean a rough draft of a budget, a preliminary budget?
No, the actual.
The real thing. That's pretty early.
When do you, Chief, when do you submit your budget for Janesville, just out of curiosity?
Well, it's, we're starting now, and it'll be submitted in before October.
So maybe by October 31st?
We'll have a weekly, October.
We historically have tried to provide the municipalities from the commission a recommended budget to be approved by the municipalities in early October. But that still has to be funded and authorized by the municipalities, city council and town board, and brought back before final approval on the commission. So when it points to the commission approving a budget, it's really after being authorized from a recommendation. So that final approval could theoretically take until November, but by then, we'll have already made a recommendation, and we would expect that the municipalities would have authorized one. So I'm not sure what the magic date is in there, but I would think, my initial thought was, yeah, late October would make sense.
How about your October meeting? I mean, not the date, but the October, so it would be the third Wednesday in October.
Or just the October meeting, because then you'd have flexibility, flexibility if you wanted to schedule extra meetings in October. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, whenever the meeting is in October.
Well, you could just simply insert the word "not later than October" of each year.
May I ask, may I ask a question of the chief from Janesville, if I can? When you do your preliminary budget, you said we start now. Do you give kind of a heads-up early on to the council? I mean, I realize it's not approval, but do you kind of let them know kind of where things are going before November? Or, and the reason I ask that is because it's such a large percentage of the cost, you know, to a municipality, so.
For big, excuse me, for big items, yes. Actually, I did that about a month ago, because we're trying to get more personnel. So I've already given them a heads-up of what we're going to try to go after.
So if we could model after that, that would be put, there's large issues, right, financial issues?
Yeah. As soon as I come across something I want to do, I forward it to them, so they can start preparing for it also.
One thing that's different from Janesville to Milton and the town is Janesville does their CIT, or Capital Improvement Program, in May of every year. So when they, so they do that separate, they do that outside of the budget process. They do an annual capital issuance in May of every year. So that part would be different, if we're looking, trying to compare apples to apples. Whereas we include the capital as part of our annual budget, oftentimes because it just becomes part of the general levy. Especially in the case of the city, we don't borrow. And we haven't for three years, and we don't plan to, hopefully for the next three years. But, so that is a little bit of a difference there. So as Chief pointed out, when they go for capital requests, those, I mean, they'll start, they start as soon as the budget's adopted, they start their capital request for the following
Well, my last question is on the meetings, number seven. It's dealing with having the meetings either at city hall or the town hall, and I assume we're going to be sharing between locations, and it's up to the chair where it's going to be. But I wondered, what about having the fire station in there as an option? I know years ago, we had it there, and maybe when you remodel and have that as an option. I mean, right now, you're limited to these two places.
Could we put in there, like, or any other agreed-upon location? Because what if we wanted one at the library?
It actually is addressed, because 7A reads, "Regular monthly meetings of the commission shall be held on the third Wednesday at 7:00 PM or at other such time as determined and consistent with the directions." Location of the meeting shall be at city hall or town hall as determined by the chair. So yeah, I guess there probably should be some other options.
Yeah, or any other location.
You could say city hall or town hall, or as determined by the chair.
Or other location.
Or other location as determined by the chair.
Or as determined by the chair.
Yeah.
So the word "or" would be added.
Town, city hall, town hall, and just move "or" after town hall, or other location as determined by the chair.
I guess I kind of feel like that's just already addressed, because it's stated as other location as determined by the chair.
It says time, not location.
It says other time, not other location.
It specifies.
There might be times you want to go to the fire hall.
It is specifying, yep, two locations.
The other thing you want to be careful about is that you don't want to say, well, we could, we can only meet on the third Wednesday, and we can only meet at 7:00 PM. There's been unique times, especially when there's a piece of a capital equipment that needs to be addressed, you're going to call a special meeting.
But it doesn't, special meetings are addressed on C.
That's correct, yeah. Regular meetings versus special.
I think it's just regular meetings. And we could, I guess of Wednesday, I mean, we can always amend this.
Plus, the regular meetings part actually does have the "or at such other time as determined." So that's not other location.
So we could all just write that in. Does everybody got that change?
Could you read it, please?
What I have is, "Shall be at the city hall, comma, the town hall, comma," because I'm an Oxford, comma, person, "or other location as determined by the chair."
I'll make the motion for the city that we make that change, then?
Wait, in case there's anything else. Does anybody have anything else from the city or town?
I just want to go back to the number nine with the budgeting, because I never heard back from the accounting from the city. Does that timeline parallel the budgeting process for the city?
I'm not, I'm not sure that there was an actual consensus as to what the timeline was, but...
We said October.
We said October. It will work for all of it? Okay. All right. I wanted to make sure before we went on.
We're adding October into the document.
And we're filling that in, like...
I think the intent was there to point out that it'll be done annually. Annually, it'll be done.
If you wanted to say October 30th, simplicity?
Sometime in October.
So I've heard two proposed amendments to this draft.
Right.
So are we going with October 30th, like each?
No, just October. No, later than October of each year.
Okay. Anybody else from the city or the town have any other questions or additions?
No, I'll just add that I believe the action taken by the commission was in the form of recommending this draft to be approved to the municipalities. So the commission has discussed this at some length already. I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, we have. Or you have.
I appreciate everyone's work. It's very comprehensive, and it picks up a lot of work over the last couple of years. So I'm impressed.
I know. I do have a question about 14, with the standard operations guide. I guess it does, kind of, my question does work with this specific item. Fire chiefs shall have the responsibility to create and implement standard operation guidelines for the efficient and effective provision of services subject to the commission's approval. How does Janesville do that?
Thank you, Chief Banker, for your participation tonight.
And my other question is, is Janesville standard operations guide the same as Milton's?
Not right now.
Okay.
No, and we do all our standard operating guidelines internally. I don't need to submit them to the council for approval.
Okay. All right.
So, and I think the idea was that they wouldn't be exactly the same, because Milton is different.
Right.
I mean, some procedural things that you think we talked about, but...
Right. Internally, there's some things that Janesville will do that Milton will not do, and there's things that Milton will do that Janesville will not do. But operationally, the majority of those procedures will be the same, so.
Chief, are those being available to the public?
It's a public draft, so anything's available to the public, yeah.
Okay. I just, I figured it was, but I thought I'd ask, so. Okay, thank you.
Aren't some of the operating guidelines, I don't know what they title it or call it, but a lot of them are held by Janesville's city administrative offices.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
In relationship to behavior, a lot of that's out of the administrative offices at the city.
Well, we use, in Janesville, we have a little different situation. We have a collective bargaining agreement, we have SOGs or standard operating guidelines, and we have a city manual or policy manual. So when we have disciplinary issues, we can use all three of those for the process.
And we don't.
That's what we're working on.
Not that we don't have anything, but we don't have a collective bargaining agreement. It's not, so I guess that's what I meant.
Maybe not a formal one, but you have a collective group of people that we want to make sure they're taken care of.
I'm happy with this, the way, with the additional changes that we have made. Are you ready for a?
Question?
Sure. Can you go up to the microphone, please? Thanks.
Section, section 11, Part C, section that talks about deposit of volunteer funds and emergency medical funds, new account in the name of the department. I'm wondering your thoughts on that section as it pertains to the association.
I guess I can answer that Wisconsin statute requires any funds in the name of the department itself are required to be held by the department and managed and responsible. The responsibility of those funds is the department. If they're named in, the funds are in the name of the department. If the funds are specifically named by the association itself, and all solicitations and advertising for them points directly at the association, that's a little different.
Okay. Okay.
But if there's any, if the public has led to believe that these are solicited or for the benefit of the department, Wisconsin statutes say that the department, which is the responsibility of the municipalities, are responsible for those funds.
Okay.
So, I hope that answers the question.
It doesn't mean we're rating that account.
No, it doesn't. I just wanted to make sure.
I just want to make sure that...
Everyone's on the same page with that one.
Yeah, we don't have any interest in...
Yeah, I mean, we do our fundraisers as far as the Pancake Breakfast, the SEAL Drive, and most of that comes in as addressed specifically where we ask that checks are made out to the Association and not to the department. So it's completely a separate entity. I just want to make sure that that's something that's, there may be some separation there. And that if something does come in that's to the department, we would...
Except that the solicitation for those, that fund drives, the public has given the impression that it's the department that's running the fundraiser and that they're using the fire station. The public perception is that this is a fire department fundraiser. There's not, it's not clear that they're solely the Association working for it outside of the fire department and away from the fire department. That's why that clarification was made. If you did fundraising in a different way than you have, that would be a little different discussion on those funds.
So are you, what, I guess my take on what you're saying is, is anything, let's just use the Pancake Breakfast as an example. That's something that the Association puts on, the Association funds, all of the overhead as far as anything that we buy at the front end to sell the pancakes, things like that. Any of those funds that are brought in on that day, where would you say those funds lie?
In the fire department treasury funds, only because the public perception is that it's a Milton Fire Department fundraiser. And that's what the state statute specifically addresses, is what's the public perception of where they're putting the money to.
And we do try, to the best of our ability, to the best of what's available to us, we make it very clear this is an association event. It's marketed as an association event. Or things like the R. SEAL Drive, that is very obviously coming from the Milton Air Emergency Services Association and not the fire department or the Orbits. These things are all advertised as association events. Where the Pancake Breakfast is held, that's maybe a different matter, but the event itself is not marketed as a department event. It's made up of association members who also are part of the department, but it is not a department event. Just to be clear.
Yeah, I thought that it was okay because you were marketing it.
Yes, my understanding, they were two separate.
They're clearly two separate things. The fire department association is clearly a separate entity. It's a nonprofit registered with the state of Wisconsin.
Correct.
It clearly is a separate entity. It comes down to statutorily, what's the public perception of this? Who's running the fundraiser? When I see the advertising, I get the perception that it's of, when somebody comes and buys pancakes, that they're contributing to the fire department.
And I guess we would have to look at maybe the way we market things in the future then? And we put Milton Air Emergency Services Association on letters and flyers and things like that. So, I mean, what you would be proposing is anything that's used as potential marketing materials could not say Milton Fire Department? Or are you thinking above and beyond that?
Well, I think, to your point, we might be able to modify the language in that paragraph to clarify if something is clearly, the public perception is that it's an association fundraiser only, that, I mean, the law allows that association to raise funds clearly.
Didn't we, didn't we talk about this initially when we first hired RW? Could you just kind of review that with everybody?
Sure.
Jeff, since we have more people here than we probably did at that time.
Right. It was actually addressed in the study, and it was addressed again by the attorney. And I think, it's not semantics, what they're looking at is, what he's recommending, the attorney is recommending in the agreement, is that there be a separate account that's still a municipal account, same as the fire department account, but in a separate. Keep that, those dollars separate, but in a municipal account, so you can track those dollars. In the agreement, it says that you would still ask the Association for approval, or they would ask for approval on how to spend it, and they'd still have a say in that. But the dollars would be open to everybody to see what the amount is and how they're being utilized.
From my perception of looking at the wording in this paragraph, it almost seems like you, as a separate entity, as an association, have any right to fundraise for any purpose for your emergency services, but anytime you are fundraising funds specifically for a particular municipality, and those funds will be deposited for that municipality, those funds must be in that particular account. If you were, say, fundraising for Edgerton, for example, you wouldn't have to deposit those funds into Milton's account because that purpose is changed, and the purpose for that municipality is not Milton any longer. So, from my understanding from the wording of this paragraph, you would only have to deposit said funds for an event that you're fundraising for if it is, in fact, for the Milton Fire Department. Is that correct? Am I have the right understanding here?
Not exactly. Where the confusion comes in is, even if they advertise it as the Association will take the Pancake Breakfast, for example, they're still holding it at the station. They're wearing uniforms. It's the fire department patch, so there's still involvement with the fire department. It's still technically a municipal event, even though the Association is running it and handling it. And it's not, and what this agreement is saying, and what we, what the Commission would say by approving this agreement, is that it's not that you're taking that money away. It's not that you want the Association to stop that activity. You just want to be aware of the dollars that are involved with that and make sure that they're legally being held according to statutes.
But it would be, then we would create a separate account?
Yes.
It wouldn't, I mean, and that's all that would be put in there? It wouldn't go into all the accounts that we work with now?
Correct. We'd have to, well, it could be, I mean, it could be within the fire department accounts, but listed as a separate account for association fundraising or association donations. So you can delineate between the two of them.
Do you, as an association, have a separate account for these funds now?
Yes, we have...
Separate bank.
Yeah, we have our association account, which is publicly donated money, things from the Pancake Breakfast, the SEAL Drive, any donations that come in. And then we also have a second account. That's just our dues fund. So all the members of the Association pay a certain dollar amount every month, and that goes for things like our own Christmas party, our own summer picnic, anything that we do as a group that we don't feel is appropriate to come out of publicly donated money. Years ago, that account didn't exist, and we felt that that wasn't appropriate. We decided to make a separate account. We keep that at two separate banks, so there's no possible co-bingling of any money.
So, Jeff, you indicated that it needed to be a second municipal account. Is the Association's account considered a municipal account?
Currently?
Yeah.
Currently, it's not.
It's a bank account like anyone else can have. It's just under the Association.
So we would need to set up a second account? And then, how does that money filter back to the Association next fire commission meeting?
We don't have any money right now.
Well, they still, they still would oversee it, right? I mean, you would still oversee that account and make recommendations for what it's to be spent on. It's just that it would have to be okayed by the Commission. But you could still have your other one with your dues.
Correct. That one would have to be a completely separate account.
Right, right.
That has nothing to do with anything other than just as a group.
But it would be moving forward.
Sorry?
It would be moving forward. There is, like, what you have in your two separate accounts is what you have in your two separate accounts.
Anything above and beyond what's already in there right now?
Yeah, so any fundraising moving forward.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Does that help?
Yes.
That would be your decision.
I have a question then.
Sure.
If I came to the Pancake Breakfast and I wrote a check for a significant amount of money as a donation, this would also be the conduit then for that, right? It would be made out to the Association, and then the Association would... Right. I just want to make sure, right? So that, so this would handle that as well. Does that make sense? Because that's separate, right? You could have somebody in the community who wants to help out, but doesn't have a specific account that they want to put it in. They just want to give it to the Association to distribute as they deem appropriate. Correct?
Yes, anything that would come in, we would put into that account, yeah.
I just don't want, you know, I want to encourage that, if we can, in our community. So it's good to just be clear about that for people in the community.
I just, I want to make sure that we're on the same page with this because some of this, I mean, us doing any kind of fundraising and then essentially giving you control of that money then, that's what I'm...
Do you get checks?
I don't, I don't think, that's not my impression that we would control how that money is spent. Am I misreading it, Jeff?
Well, as far as the way that this is reading right now, it says it would be in our respective account in the name of the department.
And it also says the department...
It would be a municipal account, but...
It also says the department shall seek the input of the said volunteer organizations before acquiring, selling, or otherwise disposing of any of the equipment purchased through the use of such funds. I understand your concern. It's definitely not in the best interest of the municipalities and the department to put at risk any heartburn over how the funds are used. It's just that will never be in the best interest of anybody to challenge the best interest of those fundraising funds. But this did clearly come up in the study and review of the attorneys on how we operate, and have been operating. That's how this got, came to surface.
The statute wasn't in the previous agreements. This wasn't covered in it?
No.
I didn't think so. Do you have any other questions? So I think what we would have to do tonight is be clear that it would be moving forward, that it wouldn't be the funds that are in there right now. Since it wasn't addressed.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, in the best interest of the Association and the things that we do, I would still like to maintain control of that money. I've always tried to make sure that we're letting you know exactly how the money is being spent. I don't generally bring a full treasurer's report to you, but I can do that as well.
And that's kind of what I was suggesting. The second municipal account, would the president then have access as a check writer for that? Or that's, or were we, as a body, the next, following their fundraiser, going to remove the money from that account and send it back over to the Association's account? As of now, you're the check writer, correct?
There's a few of us on the account, the treasurer, the president, the vice president, and then we also keep Jenny. She's a member of the Association as well.
And...
Just as when we require two signatures on all checks.
And this format wouldn't exist any more than going forward like that? Is that what we're saying?
They can have as many accounts as they want at the Association. It would just be the fundraisers that we talked about going forward. You know, I mean, we shouldn't have any business in their accounts.
Specifically states the account would have to be at one of the municipalities because it is the, it is the department's money. Anything that's raised for the department must be retained by a municipal government body. It can't be tailored out or contracted out to a third party to handle. And so, we would have to be in control of those monies, is what the context of this is saying. So, even if the Association had a second account, we would have to give the money from an event raised, some amount of dollars, back to the Association, if this is what you're referring to, because we have to collect said dollars raised for that purpose and put it in our depository.
It could be in that account.
Do you have any thoughts on this?
I don't, I don't see an issue with having them set up, if the statutes require a separate bank account. I don't even know who the signatures are on the main checking account for the fire department. But I think both the problems that were addressed could be alleviated by just designating members of the Association as signers. And all that would happen from a financial standpoint is when those dollars get deposited from various fundraisers, instead of not being recorded on the books now, I would just need to record them. And similar to, like, the 2% and 102 accounts now, when there's transactions, I would just need to record the transactions. So they would show up on the monthly report. But they could, the Association could, in my opinion, be the signers of the account, and you guys would see the disbursement on a monthly basis.
Well, that's what I would advocate for.
There is other options with this, I guess, from things that I've read about. This is part of the state statute. If each government wanted to, they could pass an ordinance within the town or the city that says that this is not the case. This is not how we're going to move forward, giving that Association the autonomy to keep the account in its name and maintain control of the money. And at that point, we would just make sure we have an agreement between all of us that we keep you up to date on anything that goes on with the account.
But with state statute, I just want to understand that, I think the reason why we had to put this clause in here was per state statute to follow the financial regulatory that the state puts down on the fire commission to ensure that the monies are being controlled by a government body as opposed to a private body. Is that correct, Ryan?
It all comes down to how the funds are raised. I mean, it's really as simple as that. It's, we're making it sort of complicated, but it is as simple as how are the funds raised?
So if you just do your fundraisers as the Association...
And keep them completely separate from the department, not have them at the department itself and not use any equipment. It would be completely separate.
Let me use an example that's like the far end of the spectrum on raising funds. If you did a fundraiser as an association at the high school parking lot and didn't wear our fireman uniforms, that's a distinct difference in how the funds have been raised in the past. I'm not suggesting that that's more appropriate or that's what you should do. But that's what I'm, when I say the perception, the public perception is, it's the department is doing the fundraiser and not necessarily the Association. That's what I'm trying to describe, is that when you use the fire station and wear the uniforms and use the property, it's how the funds are being raised. And there's nothing inappropriate in doing it the way that it's been doing as far as inviting the public to come to the station. It's worked really well, and the monies have been used really well, and there's no criticism on how the money's been used and implemented to better serve the community at all. It's just that when we did have a study that looked at how we're operating, and the attorneys looked at the statutes, this is what got drafted. There might be better language than this, that you suggested that you want this to be looked at better as to...
I wouldn't like that, yes.
So, if we...
If I could just jump in, Dan actually pulled up the ordinance on the computer here. Technology. And we're reading the state statute, and as we interpret it as non-attorneys, what Rob is pointing out is true. There is a general authority within the state statute in which the governing body of the municipality may enact an ordinance that does all of the following and authorizes a particular official or employee of the fire department to basically serve as the signer for that account. So then, Rob, Jenny, and the treasurer and the vice president would have the authority to manage and control that account. But an ordinance would need to be adopted by the two municipalities to authorize him to be in that case. And I'll point out an example that exists right here in the city of Milton. There's an account on our books in which funds were provided for a specific cause, and two signers were designated for that account. So, the city council can't touch that account. Dan and I can't touch that account. Oddly enough, the only person who can touch it is Jerry Shuinsen. He's not here anymore. So that's something that we need to fix. But we couldn't even, we can't, even though the city is, the funds are housed in a municipal account, we can't touch it. Only Jerry could. So, but don't put that in paper.
I'm pretty sure I'm on there.
So that, so how I interpret this, again, not as an attorney, and maybe it's worth having the attorney revisit, is it does appear as though that's an option as Rob has kind of discussed, so, but again...
What if we added a line or two to this existing... What if we added a line or two to this existing paragraph? And I'm not sure that that'll work, but if we added a statement saying unless both municipalities create an ordinance otherwise?
So we could, we could add that and, and we can pass the agreement tonight with the intention that we'll both develop the same ordinance. Maybe if you'll just take our word on it. That, that we would each adopt the ordinance and then we can come back. And then I don't even know if we'd have to amend it. Like, I don't even think we'd have to amend it if we put that length down.
And clearly it's in the best interest of the, the efforts in fundraising.
Correct. I, I just, I don't want to see anything, if not anything else, I wanted to see, see it grow more. I think there's more things in association we can do to raise more funds. And just over the years, the amount of equipment and training that we've contributed to the department is... I was actually just looking at a list tonight. It's, it's a lot.
And, and we don't want to, you know, the whole purpose of, of our joint agreement is not to get in the way of your fundraising and, and the things that you guys do at all.
I appreciate that.
You know, we, we don't want to get in the way with that. So can we, so then does that mean that we want to leave this like it is and then?
We're adding a line.
Are we going to add a line?
We're going to add a line.
And then we're going to individually do an ordinance?
I'm, I'm suggesting add unless both municipalities create an ordinance otherwise.
So just a quick question then to, I guess, Brian?
Be passed.
In creating the ordinance, it would have to pass. Yeah.
A proven ordinance.
Would the fire commission, would the fire commission need to do anything as far as the cities and towns ordinances?
No.
May I, may I offer a suggestion? I know you do an awful lot, but a lot of times I hear about it word of mouth. You know, the results of the funds. And I think it would really be good if we can help you or if you guys can do it yourselves, whatever, promote that a little more. Maybe annually you let people know, maybe at the pancake. Breakfast, you have a little handout. By the way, this is what we did last year.
As far as donations that came in and things that were done with that money? We, we do try and advertise that a bit, but not as much as what we should. So yeah, no, there needs to be more, more marketing of that, definitely. So I, thank you. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, we would add at the end of paragraph C, like a comma, I guess, after funds unless the municipalities approve an ordinance otherwise. Did you want it to say to the contrary? No, let's just do otherwise. I can't take the wordsmith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you guys have?
Did you catch that, Dave?
Dave? Unmute so he can't hear. You guys cut Dave off. Come on. We have to have this whole conversation again. At eight o'clock, we're ordering pizzas. I'm just saying. Yes, I... Yeah, there, I mean, there may be others. So we'll just, okay, so back to the agreement. Is there any other comments or additions or?
Do you have any concerns about any of this at all?
Yeah.
As the administrative assistant?
So I've heard three considered amendments here. Did, did we address the, the timeline for the, the attachment?
For the exhibit?
Exhibit B? Would, would that be a potential fourth amendment to this? Or that could be part of a motion for, in fact, doesn't have to be part of the document, but approved contingent on Schedule B being completed by a certain timeline.
May I offer 90 days as a suggestion?
Does that work for you guys?
Was that a motion?
You're just floating it out there.
I'll make that motion, 90 days from the, from the approval of this document.
I'll second it.
You? I mean, doesn't somebody from the city council?
You're right.
I'll second it. I'll second it. Marion's our alternate now. Okay, so Larry made a motion. There is not a second. So can you reiterate your? Did you second it? All right. There's a motion and a second.
So for the, for the sake of the meeting minutes though, is it our understanding that you're approving all three of those amendments and a 90 day?
I think what we're going to do is the city council approve the 90 days and then the town will approve the 90 days and then we'll come back and approve everything with the additions.
In 90 days?
Nope, tonight.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
For the town board, is there a motion?
I, I would move that for number four on exhibit B that we create a timeline of 90 days for completion of that.
Second.
Motion by Marion, second one by John Jennings then. Any further discussion for the town board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now do you want to go back and just approve the entire agreement with the amendments? Jeremy?
Brian, you want to start that off?
No, he can't. It's back and forth.
For the town board, for the town board, are you prepared for any action on this proposed intergovernmental agreement?
Yes. I was hoping I had a little support. I, I move to accept the revised amended draft of our intergovernmental agreement as listed.
So your motion then addresses items nine, seven A, and 11 C, I believe.
That is correct.
The motion was to approve the draft intergovernmental agreement with amendments stated to items nine, seven A, and 11 C. I have notes on.
I would second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the town board. I'll ask our clerk if she understands those proposed, three proposed amendments. Any further discussion for the town board? Intergovernmental agreements require a roll call vote or not statutorily? I don't, I'm not aware of that either. So all in favor of the motion for the town board, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that the city of Milton approves.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that the city approves the revised intergovernmental agreement while adjusting and amending items seven A, nine, nine A, and 11 C.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion of possible action regarding consultant update and transition team reports. Jeff, do you want to talk on this or do you guys want Jeff to talk on this? Do you have any questions? Chris or anybody else that wants to talk on?
I guess it's just an update. Everything, we, we've worked again on the transition plan that you have before you tonight for approval. We're also meeting again on Friday, so whatever action you take tonight, we can start implementing and start putting things together. Are there any questions on what was presented?
Are you talking about the proposal?
Says, so five says discussion on possible action regarding consultant update and transition team report. And then six is discussion on possible action regarding the transitional team project plan.
For item, for the transition team. Joint administration plan. My question is, does the transition team also report to the Janesville administration? Or is it just us? I don't know what your procedures are.
In, in the report, I talk about the fact that we're going to add to the transition team. Janesville's going to put more members on the team. Chief Banker is part of the transition team. So their administration's already involved with it. And I believe they are also keeping their city administration up to date.
That was, that was my question. Are we doing the billing study also? Is that part of what your transition team?
Right, that's...
Recommendations are?
Yes.
Okay, so...
But we're not on that yet, on the recommendations. We're on the update, right?
The update talks about the billing.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we just need to keep moving ahead with these transition team plans. Keep moving forward.
Any other discussion for the town on consultant update, transition report?
As far as the joint station property, has there been any change in information since this document has been given out on the status of the property that you're looking at, Chief Banker?
I'm not sure what point they were given. Yeah, the property we have obtained is at the corner of Y and Overland, northeast corner of the intersection. Thank you.
Where is Overland?
Just south of town line on Y.
Now you said it has been obtained, so it is confirmed?
Actually, in the process of finding the facility or the land for a fire station, we came, came across some property that the city of Janesville owned and was in the city limits. I don't know if you're familiar with the Kaiser project. That just got purchased, I don't know, maybe two, three weeks ago. And the new developer, we worked out an agreement. We gave him the four and a half acres that we had or we owned for the corner of Y and Overland. So we're working out the details on that.
You have a variety of items on here that obviously cost money. You have an increase in budget of $36,000 to increase RW's contract for six months. You have the joint administration for the rest of this year with the city of Janesville. That would add money to complete this year. And I wondered, you know, how that works, Mr. Nelson.
Half of that is $18,000.
For that, yes. Well, I know, but how that works in the city budget.
We need some fundraising.
Yeah. You know, has, have this, have these, I guess, these issues been discussed at all on the budget? And I guess has the commission discussed the roles that these play in terms of RW and your role, Chief Banker, in working together in kind of facilitating this process as we move forward? I mean, it's not that I'm opposed to it. I just want to make sure that it can be accommodated.
Just stay there.
There was too many questions there. You know, part of the transition team is everything you just said there is. We had to start from scratch and get to the point we are right now. There still are things we have to work out. Some of them are budget issues, which Chief Lucas has been working on and we're going to get together as a, as a group and work on those issues as well. So a couple of those, we can't answer you right now. But we are in the process of developing, this was probably the biggest event in this whole process. We've been talking since the get-go is, is, you know, getting all the, the members of the department on board. Make sure they're not afraid. Make sure they understand where we're going and the direction we're trying to go. But then the second part of that is you guys, is stakeholders and politicians, make sure you feel the same way we feel and that you understand it. So, but it can be scary and it can be uncomfortable because some of the answers, we don't have some of those answers yet. We're working on them and we're developing them. And yeah, the budget will have to be looked at. And we were talking about it last, a week or two ago. We'll have probably better answers here in the near future, but we were sort of waiting to see how this played out. And then now that this is playing out the way it is, I think we'll move forward in a little more of an aggressive fashion.
Well, I think maybe part of it is that, you know, that we haven't approved, you know, the whole transition team recommendations or the overall projects. So it's difficult for them to, I mean, I don't think they can really do anything more at this point unless we give them some direction. It's kind of my thought on it.
That's, I don't want to speak for the chief and I don't want to speak for Jeff, but that's the way I look at it is we have a lot of ideas and we have a lot of different things we want to try and look at. But we can't go anywhere unless we have your permission to go forward and then your support. So that's why we were sort of waiting to see how this played out. My city council and city manager had the same thing. They were, you know, we, we can't do anything until everybody's on board and everybody agrees to it. So once you do that, then I think you'll start seeing some more things happen.
So it's good that we communicate that, we, meaning all of us, to the public that this is truly a team effort.
It's totally a team effort. It's, it's everybody in this room, everybody on the fire department, the Janesville Fire Department. This is a big step for the area, for both departments, for the cities, for the community. It's huge. I, I applaud everybody in this room for taking this step. It can be very uncomfortable to do what we're trying to do and some people may think there's some hidden agenda. There, there's no hidden agenda. It's, it's about public safety and providing the best care we can and within our means. So it's a great thing.
I think, you know, for most of the people, they know that this has been going on for over two years now. At least this part of it. And for those that have been involved in working with the, the fire station and the issues associated with the frustrations in working with the building and the growth...
associated with the frustrations in working with the building and the growth of the area, that that's been going on for years. But just the progress of evaluating where we're at, the size of the city, the issues in trying to meet the area and assess that progress, the past two years has, yeah, been frustrating. But it is time to move forward. And you have done a wonderful job as a group in trying to push and get going. And it is our time to start to make those decisions. And I would advocate to try to get going. And, you know, if we agree with some of this, then it is time to say, let's go. So I think that their suggestions are very appropriate, and I'm supportive of those. I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say.
I think that's about the only way we can go is forward. We've looked at this every other which way, and with the future coming up and the expenses of everything, and to keep the safety of the people, there's only one way to go, and I think that's the way we're going right now. Because each one of us alone, Milton Fire Department, the city, we can't keep up with it. We can't afford it. So with joining with Janesville, that's the only future we've got.
And this is not a new concept. You know, this is happening all over the country, and I think you're at the forefront in the state right now for what you're trying to do, and I think it's only going to be a benefit to everybody.
I think it is the way to go also. I think there's some good planning that's been going on. There are still questions, obviously, and I know you have them also. And I think, Teresa, you were looking at these money numbers, and that's what I had highlighted on mine also, that $36,000 and the $12,000 for the remainder of this year and the administration portion. And I, you know, we didn't budget for that, so that's why it's kind of pushing the panic button. But I do think that it is the way to go.
Certainly think, once we overcome the initial cost objections and the initial cost overhead with the new station and with the new structure that's been put in place, I can definitely see the hard work that the transition team, the fire department, and the fire commission has all jointly worked together to put together a plan that is just, it's going to be more efficient. Things are going to get better, and we're going to be able to provide our services better to our communities as a result. And I just applaud everybody that's been involved in this process, just like Teresa here. And it's been wonderful to be a part of this as kind of a new person, seeing everything that's taken place over the past 10 years, I can even say, as far back as the station has needed certain things addressed to it and all the way up to current. Very impressive to see how much passion people have for wanting to do better things for the community. So thank you all for doing what you've done, and let's just keep doing it.
Are we still primarily focused on item five on the agenda? Or are we including discussion on item six?
Why don't we just move to item six? Is there some sort of motion or vote you need on item five, which I don't think we do?
No, and I want to point out on item six, the transitional project plan, any potential action on approving a plan potentially, I think probably more appropriately should come as a recommendation or authorization to the commission. The commission probably should be responsible for any ultimate action on that. And if the municipalities want to authorize the commission to do any action on that, I think that's probably the more appropriate way to act. Because any contracts would be signed by the commission, not necessarily signed by each municipality for consulting or whatever. On the other hand, item seven, where we talk about municipal budgets, we would have to fund a potential decision like that. So the municipalities would need to take action to authorize funding and any recommended action.
So, just so I have it clear in my head, so you could, the city and the town can make a recommendation to the fire commission to approve the transition plan? And then go down and then approve whatever funding they're going to approve? And then next week at the fire commission meeting, the fire commission would vote on the project plan?
That's kind of what responsibilities and authorities we've given our commission.
We just adopted that intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah. But the key is that they would require funding for any actions, so.
So I just want to be clear that because all work stops until this is approved, right? They've told us they can't go any further, so we, the idea would be that it would be approved Wednesday at the fire commission meeting.
Yeah, well, right now, they're, for the most part, funded through June right now. And the planning and transition team.
Right, but they're not going to like do anything if the fire commission's going to change its mind between now and next Wednesday.
No, but moving forward, I mean, the municipalities could literally address and reject or approve a project plan, but it doesn't seem that that's realistic. That should probably remain a duty of the fire commission itself. But I think it would be appropriate to authorize approval of the project plan.
Right. We can talk about the funding next.
Actually, I was thinking that because we have the two governmental bodies here tonight, and we have, the fire commission has gone and come to this point, I as a commission member would feel much better if the two bodies tonight would say, yeah, let's go ahead.
And you can do that. I think recommending approval of it satisfies that, but if the people here voting thinks that they just want to initiate that and approve it right now, that's up to everybody involved here.
I'll make that motion for the city.
I would, if I could jump in.
Please.
I agree with Brian in the sense that I do believe that it is the fire commission's responsibility to approve the project plan. So I follow your logic to make recommendations from the two separate bodies with the understanding that it will be approved by the fire commission next week. From my personal perspective with the city administrator hat on, I think it would be worthwhile potentially having a conversation at this point, though, as to what are the expectations if this plan is approved? And I think now is the time to have that conversation with everybody in the room. Because as Brian pointed out, there are funding considerations here beyond the $18,000 for the rest of this year that the city would have to come up with and the town would have to come up with. But, I tried to choose my words carefully, number six. If that is approved, and I think this question kind of goes out to the group, if this project plan is approved, let's say either tonight or next week, Wednesday, is the expectation that that is then set in stone? Are we, are we, are we prepared as two entities to go out for $4 million worth of a referendum in the spring of 18? I mean, and I think that, I think the question really is to the group, is that the expectation? Because what I would hate to see is, all good intentions are made tonight or next week, Wednesday, and they're approved and they move forward with the understanding that, oh yeah, the project plan's approved. And then people start to really start to think about it, and they start to read comments on Facebook, and they start to go to school board meetings, and they start to read the Courier and the Gazette blogs, and they say, oh yeah, we did agree to go for $4 million worth of a referendum in the spring of 18, while the city's in the middle of a revaluation, by the way. So I think there's, I appreciate everybody's willingness and desire to move forward really, 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 really quickly. But I'm fearful that everybody's desire to move forward really, really, really quickly puts these guys in a really, 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 really tough spot when everybody says, the tax rate in the city's going to be $11? And the overall mill rate's going to be close to 30 with a $4 million referendum on top of the school district? So, I mean, because that's what, that's what you're, that's what you're asking to be approved tonight. And I just want to make sure that the expectations are clear. I mean, we've talked, I will be very forthcoming even with Curry in the room, we've talked, we know a referendum is on the horizon and it is absolutely needed. We know that. We know that from the city's perspective. I don't know if $1 million, and I don't know if $3 million makes sense. I don't know what's behind that. But it seems like you guys do, and some of you are really eager to do it. And I just, I'm cautioning you as someone who doesn't have a vote, but will be equally, if not greater, maligned when this is approved. And either the two governing bodies get cold feet because they say, oh, $4 million, oh, that's right, remember that night back in June, we all sat together and we were super excited to pass this? And we agreed to a $4 million referendum in the spring of 18? I don't know if I really want to do that anymore. And then these, then we left these folks out high and dry. Or I'm equally maligned by the people that say, I can't believe you're going to raise my taxes from $9.57 right now, which is still the lowest in Rock County, to $11. No mention of the school district. So I just think everybody needs to, it sounds like some folks are really excited about this, and that's great. But I think the expectations need to be clear on both sides of what this document means. Is that, is that your hope is $4 million referendum? Or is that, hey, you approved it, guys?
Yeah, and I think Jeff should talk about that. Because I don't, I don't know that those are like firm figures.
Correct, they're not. They're stated, it's stated right in the transitional plan that those are estimates. We don't have the exact figures. I think, speaking for the team, and Chief Lucas and Chief Banker can say if it's different, we're looking at the approval of this transition plan to move forward, and part of moving forward is that we're going to work on a referendum. We will bring back to the commission and to the city council and to the town board what that exact dollar amount will be. We're not there yet. And it states right in there, those are just estimates.
And it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't have to be April. It could be 2018. I mean, because it doesn't really matter if it's April or November when we get the money, right? It all comes in 2019?
Right, I mean, but again, it comes down to expectations. And it says spring of 2018 here. So, yeah, again, as long as everybody's cool with this, and this is being recorded, so we could all go back and check, thank goodness it is, lordy, I hope there are tapes. May I, I mean, I just, so I understand estimates, that it says estimates, and I agree, but, you know, stuff like that, it says spring of 18 in here. And it says, you know, remodeling of the current station in 2019. I mean, that's, that's what it says. So again, if the expectations are, hey, that's fluid, okay, you know, that's fine. But again, I just want to make sure. And, you know, one of the other small pieces of this, and Dan reminded me of this, we as a municipality, we don't need to go to a referendum for capital. We don't need to, we're not like a school district where we don't have to. But we as the city of Milton are going to struggle to come up with $1.5 million worth of capital by 2019. That's, I mean, that, that puts our debt capacity over 90%. That endangers our bond rating, there's a lot of things. And again, I know everybody's excited about this, and that's great. And we've had many conversations and we're on the same page, but the expectations need to be very, very clear that if this is approved either tonight or next Wednesday, that this is a framework to work from and that it's not necessarily set in stone. Or is it? Because if it is, we've got some huge decisions to make as a city. Huge, 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 huge. Because if this is set in stone, we're in trouble.
May I offer a suggestion? That that area or that section of the document be modified to the extent of additional research and/or estimation of cause and timeline for these two particular items will be presented, you know, will be presented in the future for approval. So I'm saying you're kind of removing it, if you will, from all we're, all we're doing is recognizing that there is going to be something that's going to have to happen.
Right. And I think the commission already understands that. Everything we've brought to the commission all along, all of these issues, we've said that repeatedly, and that includes this plan. You're giving approval tonight that we move ahead on these items. There's nothing set in stone with dollar amounts. We're coming back to the commission for approval on all of those issues. You know, whether or not we do capital or not do capital, that's all going to be worked out. We just want to go ahead to start working on it.
But in fairness to, and to Administrator Hollick's point, I agree. I think that we want to be real clear to the public and to everyone else that there's no set amounts yet. This can be, oh, sorry, this can be scary for people. And so I'm just offering that.
I'd like to, I'd like to add too, my earlier comments were procedural comments. I hadn't really gotten into the discussion of the plan itself, the body of it. I appreciate everything the administrator has said, and I agree with all of those sentiments. And I am concerned about how we're going to fund some of the efforts outlined in the I'm generally in favor of attempting to focus on this plan, but there needs to be more planning on the total funding process, the timeline, and the ability to fund it. So I think there has to be some creative language here in, like the administrator pointed out, in how to implement the plan and fund it. But generally speaking, I'm in favor of the goals intended in the plan. So I didn't, I didn't answer a lot of the need in this question, but that's my sentiments from the town.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I agree with everything Brian just said, we're playing ping pong here. Everything that's in here, and I want to make it clear to everybody too, everything that's in here is not anything new to us. Chris has been, Chief Lucas has been fantastic and communicative throughout this whole process. I'm looking out for their best interest so they don't have an expectation that gets, you know, shattered. Looking out for the council, town board, fire commission, I just want to make sure everybody's clear with this. And I, I mean, like I said, I mean, it's on tape, and I'm comfortable with Jeff's explanation. I don't, I don't get a vote. The only thing I'm uncomfortable with in here is that Chris is going to step down and say, oh.
Comfortable with that?
I just, you know, for all of the things that we have done in the last two years and all of the needs that we have known in the last, I'm going to say 15 years that I've lived in this area, about the needs of our fire department, the safety of our firefighters and our EMTs, our buildings, the wages, the whole works. I can tell you that as a city council member, I have not been shy in pointing out to people when we have discussed fire department that, yeah, there's going to be a referendum. Because I know that there's needs, and I know that we have tried everything that we could do. And when it gets down to lives, we have to step forward. And I, I too am a taxpayer, my taxes will go up too. But, you know, I just, I don't want people to think that because this is an unknown dollar amount and because of the reports that we're getting from the school district that we're, that that's going to keep us from keeping this community safe and our, the people that are working with us. You know, I have no problem, I have no problem with. I have no problem with approving this whole document because we really just can't go back. And referendum, tax increase, you know? I'm sorry. The price of milk has gone up. If you're lucky, you can find a dozen of eggs for fifty cents, you know? I mean, these things happen. And the cost of the equipment, the electronics in the equipment, the repairs, the cost of the medication, the Narcan, all of those things. I mean, those things don't go away. They just keep going up. So I support this. I support this as it is. And I know that there's still questions coming. But just from what I have seen thus far from the transition team, I have complete faith that you're going to give us all the information that we need as you have already been doing.
For the sake of discussion, this is not a motion, but if we were to recommend to the commission moving forward to achieve the goals of this draft plan, that wouldn't be a formal approval of the plan. But achieving, moving forward and attempting to achieve the goals of this plan as outlined, recommending that to the commission. Again, that would not be a formal approval of the whole plan in body.
Is that enough of a commitment, Jeff, for you?
I'm sorry?
Is that phrasing enough of a commitment for you to proceed with certainty? Did you hear his motion? I'm sorry.
Yes. I think they'll be fine, especially, you know, the commission's going to address it next Wednesday. And really, what we're looking for, again, is it's not every single detail in the plan. It's go ahead and move forward. We want you to move on all these issues and start making progress. And we'll come back to the commission monthly with everything we do.
Another important part, excuse me, of discussing this plan is, is there anything in this plan you want to criticize?
I thought we were going to be talking this over tonight.
Yes.
Let at least the people who aren't privy to the fire commission meeting absorb what Jeff has shared with us.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
From the city? First, okay.
I do have a question, and I promise not to spill my soda. Sorry about that. I have a question on the collections. As a result of coming together, you know, the Janesville Department and the Milton City and Town Departments in terms of this transition and negotiation, is it easier to get a better, dare I say, deal? Are you getting a better deal for costs in terms of collections? And is there more firepower in terms of collections?
You're talking EMS billing?
Yeah.
Yes, by far. I mean, and we've already addressed that with moving away from the previous vendor and going to Janesville's vendor who gave us the same rate. And historically, medical billing vendors will give you a lower percentage if you have a higher volume of calls. So we're mixing our calls with Janesville to get that type of rate.
So it's a lower rate?
Yes.
By how much?
Three percent plus. At least three percent.
The firepower to collect is increased, right?
Is the rate of collection higher than? Is that what you're trying to ask?
I'm not sure that affects the firepower of collection. Collection's more related to how quick we get the bills out, how well the billing service does, and Medicare's rules that change constantly.
Jeff, this subject particularly indicated you were going to have some recommendations to give us tonight in regards to EMS billing. Was that going to be tonight or at the fire commission meeting?
We should have received, I've sent it out. It was, I sent out a review of that. And it's basically the transition plan for the changing from the previous.
It was that we had to have a private collection, right? We could have the private one used by Janesville or the Wisconsin State Debt Collection. You mentioned that in your...
No.
No? I've got an under-selecting collection agency.
Oh, the collection, yes.
Which is separate from the other.
That's the collection company.
That's the separate.
That's a collection company that we go to after we can't, the billing company can't collect. We would utilize, we're looking at utilizing Janesville's same collection agency to keep that smooth.
So we're talking about using the same billing and the same collection? So people are clear. It's two separate things, but we're going to use the same ones.
Right. Which also allows us to utilize personnel, office personnel and billing personnel a little more fluid because they're used to the same software, the same program, same billing companies.
For the public's sake, these would still be kept separate. All of these numbers and records and processes would be still kept separate from each other. They wouldn't be all mixed in one bucket.
I just wanted to say, from a collection standpoint, Janesville, our collection rate is eighty-four point nine percent, almost eighty-five percent, which is pretty high. So we do a fairly decent job with that.
And the average, the average for billers nationally is like seventy-five, so that's a very good collection rate.
Eighty-four.
What did we have before?
Do you remember the last Janesville?
Okay, just under eighty. But when you're talking four percent on a million plus, we're talking dollars.
That could offset some of the costs. Does anybody else have any questions or?
I have one in regards to the referendum part again. The operational one, how many full-time staff would that bring on board? For the operational, I mean, or actual people, I mean?
We haven't determined that yet. We haven't determined that exact number. That's another number that's got to come back. And obviously, there's direct costs related to that. We're not there yet. That's, we're talking about that with the joint station. And that's probably two years off before we actually staff that.
And some of those people would be at that joint station and some would be at our other station, our main station here in town? Or they all be at the joint station?
Not completely determined. But what we're looking at and what's been discussed is to have the joint station staffed with both Janesville and Milton personnel and the current station remodeled but not staffed. Our paid-on-call personnel would respond to that station.
And that one million dollar referendum for operations, it said it's annual. Is that going to be more than one year? Is that going to continue on forever annually?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I assumed. I wanted to make sure.
One other thing I'd like to say real quick is, you were saying earlier that we have to come back to you with what we're going to try to do. Really, also, you guys have to determine what type of, what level of care you want to provide your community. You know, we can just get one fire truck and two people and go to calls. And that's not a good thing. But if you guys determine you want a higher level of care, which that's what we're trying to do with the shared services by maybe saving some costs here to allow us to increase our service level, that's what we're trying to do with the shared costs or the shared services. But it really, it comes down to you, all the boards here, what level of care do you want to answer to, to your constituents? And what do you want to provide them? We'll do that. We'll do whatever we have to do within means. But it's not really just us coming forward with what we want to try to do. Because if you want me to do that, you're not going to like what I have to hear. I like a lot of fire trucks. But seriously, it is, it's both you guys and us determining what level of care, excuse me, we want to provide our community.
That was...
Is that on tape?
Thanks, Jeremy. That'll be your reelection slogan.
That was one of the comments about the ALS and having a paramedic chase vehicle. Now, who would that be purchased by? Would that be purchased by Milton? Is that another additional cost? I'm just wondering.
Again, this is just a plan. And we were waiting till you guys to give us the permission to do what we need to do. And a lot of those things, we still haven't completely determined because we weren't sure what direction it was going to go. I'm speaking for myself. I can't speak for Jeff. But, you know, we were sort of sitting back waiting to see what level of protection you guys want and you want us to do. So we haven't really even gotten into those specifics on that yet.
I have a specific question on the plan here as far as the proposed capital plan for three million dollars to cover a portion of the joint station and remodel of the current station. Specifically, the money that would be put to a joint station with the city of Janesville, exactly, is that brick and mortar money? Or is there other capital expenditures other than literally property and building proposed in the plan? What's that money would use for in the joint fire station, the way you see it?
Again, those are estimates. We haven't got into the detail. And it's already, some of that detail may change. Like we, the land, it sounds like we're not going to pay anything for. It all depends on how we work out that agreement. You know, the ability with you approving the plan, it gives us the ability to start really getting into specifics and moving forward. We haven't talked, we talked about staffing that station, but only at a certain level. We'll get into more detail now. That detail may determine how much capital cost there is compared to how much operational cost for Milton.
My question isn't about what the dollars will be at all. My question is, where would the dollars go? What capital investments would there be specifically?
The building.
Okay. Not uniforms, not?
No, not uniforms, not apparatus. We're talking about the building structure there.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious because it's a short sentence and it doesn't say a lot about it yet in the plan.
Right.
I understand that this is, you know, still lays out. So you're still formulating a lot of plan and stuff. But then I suppose you'd probably take trucks and other apparatus and stuff from the, all the different departments and kind of join it there? So you'd pull some trucks from Janesville that would be stationed there and one or say, or two from Milton? Is that how that would work then?
Correct. And those details aren't worked out yet.
I understand that.
We don't anticipate coming to the commission and saying, "We need you to buy another engine or a ladder."
We're just looking to kind of see your, you know, thought process behind it. Not necessarily with the specifics. We just want to know the thought process.
Yep.
That's kind of what we're thinking.
Could it be possible to do a little bit of a projection? Getting back to Chief Banker's comment. Get a little bit of a projection of if you want this level of service at a certain point, two years from now or a year from now, and you want this level of service three years from now, could that be part of the information that comes back to us?
Definitely. I mean, and that is, once we get the go-ahead, those are the specifics we're going to come back to you with.
Because I'd rather know the realities and what, you know, what the consequences are of making a choice before I make a choice.
Right.
Let's say that this plan is approved tonight or next Wednesday by the town and the city and the commission. What is your timeframe to get some of that information to us? Do you need ninety days? Do you need six months? What do we need and what can we expect if we are within the near future approving enough information for you to go ahead and get us hard figures? What do you need to accomplish that?
You will start getting hard figures and specific information right after that. Every commission meeting will have a different issue that we're going to deal with and focus on and start bringing back to you. One of the first things we're going to work on, especially if we have to, if we're in a position where Chief Lucas is going out October first, we need to spend all of our time and effort right now on what does joint administration mean? What specifically are we going to have? What's that going to cost? And get that back to the commission as soon as possible so we can implement it and put it in place by October first.
Just real quick, I agree with the city administrator. I would not tie yourself into anything. The plan and what we've worked on is a roadmap for the future. I know that right now, what we're trying to work on is financial sustainability, looking at the budget. What can we do right now, this month, next month, remainder of the six months of this year? Those are our priorities, I think, right now. And I agree, you shouldn't commit yourself to a three million dollar referendum or whatever. It should be a roadmap for us for the future of what we can do down the road. Yeah, we would love to have multiple fire trucks in the fire station. We'd love to have multiple firefighters, Milton and Janesville. I don't know when we're going to get there. That's what, we're all going to have to work together. But if you tie yourself into ninety days or we're going to come back with numbers by, you know, August, we may not be able to do that. And that may look worse to the community because we're not moving forward. So we've been moving forward in a great direction, doing a lot of great things. You guys have already experienced, whether you know it or not, you've already experienced benefits from the shared services. You just had your ISO rating in your community and it went down. It's apparently going to go down. That's going to save insurance ratings for commercial and industrial type of buildings a lot. We've already had incidents, you know, that we've gone to together. They've come to Janesville, we've come to Milton. And I believe in one or two cases, we may have saved lives already. So there's stuff that hasn't even cost the city or the town or the commission a penny that are just dramatic. And that's what we're focusing on. And the plan is a map, it's just a map. And some of those things, we may be able to give you some answers. If you want staffing models, I can give you staffing models. Chief Lucas can give you staffing models. Those are easy. But some of these things, I don't think I would tie, I would lock into them right now. I would hold off and say, "We've done some really good things. We got a lot of great things coming. We got to work with, you know, finance and different things to get us stable. And then we'll figure out where we're going to buy that vehicle," you know, those type of things. So that's all.
I'd like to hear more about any potential criticism in the plan itself. Is there any goals in the plan that don't make sense to somebody or that you're uncomfortable with understanding?
From anybody, like from anybody. Not just us up here. Anybody, any suggestions from anybody in the audience? Or Dan or Al or anybody else?
If there's not any obvious concerns in the goals and the plan, I think it would be appropriate to recommend attempting to implement the plan.
You're looking for a motion?
Well, this is a, so we're not talking about funding the RW contract with this. Okay, all right.
I'm not suggesting approving the plan in whole and saying, "This is our bible." My, what I'm recommending is that we recommend trying to implementing the goals outlined in the plan.
I would move that the township recommend to the fire commission the approval of proceeding forward with the goals of the transitional project plan.
Motion by Marion seconded by Leonard then to move forward with the goals of the plan as submitted. Any further discussion for the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have one absent here, so there's four of our five town board members present.
Okay, city, I'm looking at you.
I'd like to make the motion that we move forward to kind of pass these goals on to the fire commission with our approval, that we move forward with them.
Second. There's a motion and second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Right, most of them she said, "No." Sounds better.
Are we on item seven here?
Item seven, discussion of possible action regarding 2017 fire department budget.
So is there something specific we should address immediately in short-term goals that we, as municipalities, feel we should authorize or approve to try? To try to, so we're not crippled by some of these immediate or short-term goals? I, it's, it's possible that you might wanna consider any actions in closed session as part of that thought process, but...
Could we avoid going in a closed session? I mean, do we have to go in a closed session?
If there's no motion to go into closed session, of course, we wouldn't be.
I mean, if there's, I don't know if there's anything that we absolutely have to discuss in closed session, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, that's up to the members here, I guess, if you felt that there was need for that. There, there was, there was some sentiment that we want, there was certain things that might wanna be discussed in closed session, so I'm gonna leave that to those that might be concerned and want to air anything out that are part of that discussion.
I guess I would like to go into closed session to discuss the RW contract.
I guess I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, is, would it make sense to, I'm trying to think of the right words here, in order to move to item nine and come back to the rest of the agenda, what's the appropriate language to state that that's what your desire might be?
To spend the way the, to modify the agenda and move the closed session up? Is that what you wanna do?
I think that would be sufficient.
Uh-huh, right.
That way the record shows that you, you consciously made a decision to move ahead in the, the agenda.
Well, isn't item ten indicates that we can?
No, that, that means you wanna come out of closed session.
Correct. And what does it say for the rest of that, after reconvening?
Possible actions on items discussed in closed session.
Well, there hasn't been a closed session yet, so you can't go to ten.
Well, I wasn't suggesting we go to ten. I'm just saying we're covered. If we do do nine, we can go to, can make, take action. I'd be saying that we could basically come back to seven after.
Well, but you might wanna, coming out of that closed session, you might wanna address items seven and eight, any budget items or other general items, as opposed to losing the opportunity to discuss seven and eight.
Yeah.
I'll make.
Did you have a motion on the floor?
Not yet. Not yet, but I'm working on it. Consideration of.
Where are we going?
Well, there's been some discussion about moving item nine up in the agenda. So move.
Second. Okay, so.
I, I think there's a question on where you're going for closed session?
Correct.
Going to the police department conference room.
All right, so that's just out of order. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor into moving item nine to a different position on the agenda after closed session?
Prior to item seven.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the, for the town board on the.
All those opposed, because the motion carries.
We shouldn't have.
Is there, is there a motion on the agenda order?
I move to move item nine. I have item seven on our agenda.
Second.
Motion by John Jennings, seconded by Marion, to move item seven, item nine to.
Preceding.
Preceding item seven on the agenda. All in favor for the town, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unanimous, one, one absent otherwise. So.
So now you can.
With two municipal bodies?
That, that's up to the motion, I suppose. And, and anybody you might wanna invite into that closed session would be appropriately part of that motion, potential motion to convene in a closed session.
Town?
Seeing as it affects both parties equally, I think it's appropriate for both of our parties to understand the financial responsibilities of RW's contract. So I would see no reason to exclude anyone from both municipalities.
So we have to make a motion to go into closed session, and then you can add, you can add whoever you want to come in a closed session. And people can come in for parts of closed session and leave too.
Consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five, paren one, paren E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. RE contract with RW, RW management. And we should include both governmental bodies in the closed session and.
Chief Lucas.
Chief Lucas.
Chief Lucas is it?
And.
I, I would suggest inviting Chief, Chief Lucas as part of that motion. At least for part of the.
Right.
Closed session.
And then if you wanted to invite.
And then Chief Baker.
Anybody else?
Anybody, anybody.
RW, if.
RW, if needed.
If needed, depends on your motion, but if needed, you can call them in at that time.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and the city of Milton is now moving into closed session.
Just a moment, the town needs to take action.
Right, right. And can we take like just a five-minute bathroom break?
I'd, I'd like to hear the city's motion, because the town is likely to clone that motion as far as who's in being invited and how.
I have including both governmental bodies, Chief Lucas and others as needed.
For the town, is there a motion on closed session?
So moved.
So a motion by John Jennings, seconded by Marion, to convene in a closed session for the same reasons, and inviting the same parties as the city's motion. Is that what you're in motion, is understood to be? Our clerk got that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to reconvene and to open session.
Second.
I, I also want to, for the record, state that during closed session, Administrator Holick, Dan was invited into closed, closed session. Chris Lucas, Chief Chris Lucas, Jeff Raymer, RW management. Those four people were invited in closed session. That was, that was it, right? For the record. And, for the city.
Can I get a motion?
I move to go in open session.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we're back in open session.
Brings us then, we had put items nine and now ten prior to item seven. Any action on closed session could, could include items seven in, in that discussion, or possible action?
I would move to amend the town budget in the, in the, for, well, for 2017, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to allow the commission to contract additional consulting work with RW management.
Would your motion include anything about other administrative funding, or not in this motion?
Not in this motion.
Is there a second? So a motion by Marion, seconded by Leonard, to modify the 2017 town municipal budget and to, for an increase of twelve thousand dollars to.
I know this isn't my place, but I think you mean six thousand.
Oh, yes.
You're only gonna.
Your, the intention, the discussion was about twelve thousand dollars overall. So was your, was your motion to six thousand dollars?
That's correct. I know, it's getting dire.
You understood your second to be that. Okay, so the amendment of the 2017 municipal budget for the town of six thousand dollars increase for the purpose of potentially funding consulting further. At this time, there was only a motion towards this. For the town, on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous. It was four ayes, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I, I make a motion to approve six thousand dollars for administrative and additional expenditures necessary allocated in amending the budget for 2017.
I'll second it. That's where I got the twelve from. I was putting both of them together. Sorry about that.
So a motion by John, seconded by Marion, to increase an additional six thousand dollars to 2017 municipal budget to, to potentially be applied towards fire department administrative costs. Is that, under, you understood your motions?
That's correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, city of Milton?
I move that we allocate six thousand dollars to, for, towards RW consulting, and an additional six thousand dollars for administrative expenses related to that process. And that would come in an authorization to amend the 2017 city of Milton budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any questions or further comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries.
Does that conclude any discussions, other than items eight and eleven on the agenda? For the city, be ready to move towards item eight on the agenda, general items, if any?
We have no general items. I'm speaking for everybody.
If there are none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I would move to adjourn the town and Milton meeting.
Motion by Marion, seconded by Leonard, to adjourn town board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.
I make a motion that we to end the city of Milton meeting. Adjourn. I'm adjourned, I'm started.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? Oh, man, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your time, and everybody that waited for us to come out of closed session.